We're going to get started. Just so everybody is aware, the meeting is currently being recorded by Norton Media Center. If anyone else is recording, please just identify that you are doing so. We're going to start with the Pledge of Allegiance. The flag is to my left. Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
All right, we're going to start with the minutes from the March 26th open meeting. Mr. Sebas, you got a question?
Yeah, so I have one. I guess that's a correction. So, under the organization of athletic boosters, third sentence, all groups need to be registered as not-for-profit by July 1st, 2018. That's actually not actually correct. So, we'll allow them to be under the umbrella of the larger booster. So, they don't have to be registered if they're going to fall under the umbrella of the larger booster.
Do you want to strike that?
Yeah, I would just strike it.
I would suggest that because you have some that have their own already, that they're not going to go under the umbrella, they'll keep their own number. So, I would say or.
So, in the motion itself, the third bullet point, all boosters can or will be under one tax ID number. That's where I would actually put it in the motion itself. So, I would strike the line and end of the motion, say, boosters can either have their own not-for-profit tax ID number or fall under the umbrella of the larger booster.
Okay. Any questions?
No.
Motion to amend the minutes as stated.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Any other discussion on the meeting minutes? Here, done. Moving on. Lawrence, Mrs. Cohen.
I reviewed and approved warrants that were presented to me at the March 26th School Committee meeting. The total amount approved was $274,505.46. I wish to enter the information into the public record.
Thank you. Any discussion? Okay, moving on to the student representative updates. Gentlemen.
Hello. The high school student council is holding their annual sock drive this week. So, socks collected by each graduating class are going to be donated to the main strength in the shelter. Also, the National Honor Society is holding its annual bike-a-thon fundraiser this Thursday. The NHS art show is this Wednesday from 5:30 to 7:30 p.m. Also, the Drama Club is putting on its performance of What I Want to Say But Never Will, 7:00 p.m. this Friday in the high school auditorium. Also, the Biannual Health Fair is this Wednesday during school. Tickets for prom are being sold this week after school. So, prom will be May 11th at the Cross Pavilion, which is right at Central X Stadium. And then, this weekend, a group of students will be leaving for their service learning trip to the Dominican Republic.
Any questions? Okay, the next agenda item, readiness presentation, Dr. Better.
Well, good evening to everyone. So, as some of you know, I've been involved with the National Superintendent Association for nine years now. And this has become kind of that full circle of, as we talk about SEL students, SEL in our schools, one of the other things that we are trying to talk about nationally is defining students as more than just an MCAS score or a score. So, one of our goals here, do you want me to go up there? Is that what? Okay. One of our goals here, I'm getting a look like, I'm getting a lot of looks, is is a look at how we try to redefine our students by more than just a score. I just touched that, right? So, one of the things that you have in your packet.
You have to stand on the other side.
I have to stand on this side?
Yeah, you just have to touch that side.
Okay. This table's in the way, though.
Or Joe. Joe, hand it to podium.
Okay, I'm going to do the podium. Fantastic technology. So, one of the things that we've been working on is nationally, getting this nationally looked at by every superintendent, every school district. And I think the SEL movement, the social-emotional behavioral learning movement within the state of Massachusetts, which has become the leader of this, has led us to have a discussion beyond looking at MCAS scores. So, it kind of brings this a little bit full circle to more of a, what are the academic indicators of what a successful student in high school should, we should be looking at that helps to define us? Everybody in this room has a definition of a college-bound student, not necessarily a career-bound student or even a life-skill student. So, the movement here is really about looking at, what are the academic indicators for college preparation, for college readiness, for students? So, in this particular case, I won't go through each one, but 2.8 out of 4.0 scale is the norm, if you will, nationally. One or more of the following, AP exams of three or more, that's on a 1, 2, 3, 4, 5 scale, advanced placement courses receiving actually an A, B, or a C grade, dual-credit college, English and/or Math with an A, B, or C grade, and so forth. Again, this doesn't just talk about that one test score. And I know many of you have some strong opinions about that to begin with. So, as I was involved with this, I said, well, this is interesting because this kind of brings us full circle about what it is to be a college student. There is no college student in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts right now who is being asked about their MCAS scores. Never happened, and it's not going to happen in the future. And there is a scholarship that's available that looks really good, and that's the ADAM Scholar Award for students who are ranked in the top 25 percent and then get proficient in advance on the test. But the fact of the matter is, that's tuition only. And the state college/university system, specifically the community colleges and the four-year colleges in Massachusetts public sector, that pays for tuition, and those schools are all run on fees. Matter of fact, when you pay your bill for any of you who have children that have gone through that process, it's all based on fees. And that started, actually, when I was an undergrad back in 1988 and even now. When it talks about SATs and ACTs, there's a national recommendation on what these scores should look like. Again, looking at math being a 530 or better, reading/writing a 480 or better, and so forth. And then also taking a look at, what are the placement exams? For example, Massachusetts, on that number three bullet, Massachusetts uses the Accuplacer test in almost all of its community colleges and in the state college/university system. And then, private schools are using their own as well. But this is where you get that one-third of students have to take remedial courses and all that. That comes from students taking that placement test and not scoring at the cut score or above and having to have to take remedial courses. So, how do we get our students to actually be involved in, if you will, prepping for that assessment? In 2002 through 2008, I worked at a regional vocational school. We were one of the first schools up the street that was actually utilizing the Accuplacer assessment in junior year as a practice test. And it was just scored internally, but the idea behind it was, so how's this student who's getting a proficient on MCAS going to do on this placement test? And what we saw was test-taking skills, no different than PSATs right before you take the SATs and ACTs and so on and so forth. And what we saw is that our students that were going to be close to remedial because of practice weren't no longer taking remedial courses. And if you don't know anything about remedial courses in college, it usually means you don't get credit for them and you're still paying for them. So, that means you have to take more actual courses in order to hedge up. Other additional factors that can contribute to college success are earning As, Bs, and Cs. I think that's pretty much a given, you know, in most of us in this room, the faster completion, actually taking the time to complete that form. Because you could be surprised by the money that you're not getting, but you could also be surprised with the money you're going to get. And that happens a lot more. And sometimes, there's the wild factor that happens, wow, I didn't know I was going to get $5,000 every year. I didn't know I was going to get $11,000 every year. I didn't know, I thought I was going to qualify, and I didn't qualify. And then, academic advising, which is something we're trying to do more of in six to twelve here. And then, bridge programs and completion of math courses above Algebra I, which by the way, is a recommendation of the Mass Core, the Massachusetts Core Curriculum, is completing mathematics at Algebra II or above. So, what is career-ready as defined by this new movement, if you will? Well, it's really to take a look at career interests for students. We know we can do some of that with our Naviance Protocol System that you heard about just a few weeks ago. But we also know that we need to take a look at the behavioral connection and experimentation of benchmarking students. So, 90 percent attendance in school becomes a major cutoff. Matter of fact, when this drops nationally into the 85, 80 range, the incredible amount of students who aren't applying to college are in that, percentage goes up in those words. 25 hours of community service, we have mandated community service here in the district. Workplace learning experiences, that's an area I actually am going to be calling for a local business meeting at the end of this spring or maybe early summer, where we have companies that have moved into town, as you know, and we want to make connections with them and not let them forget about us, because our students could really benefit from those experiences. Industry credentials, one of the things that we're doing at the high school is, our business program is going after Chapter 74 approval, which is a vocational technical. And they're never going to have the traditional vocational technical certificate, but they could go after certain products. For example, I'm thinking about computer science classes, where you could go for all the different certifications in that area. That's very much connected to students doing well in career and workplace. Dual-credit, that's one of the connections to the prior one that we just talked about. And then, two or more organized co-curricular activities. These are the students that want to be involved with the Spanish club and the band, and they want to be involved with the art club and the community service club, and so on and so forth. There's great statistics, statistical data in that area as well. And then, the third part is life-ready. This is the one that gets a little bit more controversial, because the SEL has brought us full circle. And for us, what makes it really interesting is that we're trying to look at perseverance and grit as things that are really important to student's success, regardless if they go to work or if they continue their education. Too many kids, as you know, drop out of their first job right away. They leave their first job, they're terminated from their first job, they don't like their first job. And instead of working through it, we may have students who actually end up in other situations that are, can be actually very negative for students. Same thing with college, it's the same idea. What's really interesting is that we're working with Panorama Education. And Panorama Education, which is a survey program, allows for us to take a look at school climate and culture and students reflecting. We had the students do it this year. We got some really interesting data. We had parents do it. We're actually going to release the parent data in probably two weeks. And then, we had the teachers do it for their school. The teachers and the parents and the students were not tracked by individual. However, this is where Panorama comes in for us. With parental preapproval, we could begin to take a look at tracking students' social-emotional concepts and make that part of our entire, if you will, protocol for a new report card for every student. So that you're looking at things like their attendance, their discipline, their report card actual grades, and then you're looking at the whole SEL thing. Is this a student who gives up too soon? And is the student reporting back to us that way? Now, the controversial part about this is that for some families, that might be, well, that's too much information for me to give to you. But remember that this is no different than any other information that we collect from kids through the parent process. Now, we're not going to do it, the data we collected right now, we did not collect by individual. We only collected by aggregate. Same thing with the parents, and we would never do the parents individually. We don't have permission to do that. And the teachers, we don't have permission, our staff, I should say, staff, we don't have permission to do that as well. And the idea behind all of this is to move full circle around, students are more important than an MCAS score, MCAS score, or whatever the state assessment really is going to be called. And I gave two specific pieces of information. One is the National College and Career Readiness Indicators, you can go right to them. And then, the Panorama Education gives you a perspective as well. The last part that I think is really important is that this is also part of two other things that we're doing. One is April 27th, we have a profile of a graduate, a new process that we're putting into place. What does a profile of a graduate look like? Probably like those two guys over there, by the way. You know, well-rounded, involved, good students, students that are actively engaged in their community, and so on and so forth. So, what does it look like for us? Most importantly, what are the skill sets that we want to teach those students? It's wonderful to look at a report card with every grade an A, but that doesn't necessarily mean that a student is actually going to be successful in college. There are other things that help to define that, especially in this day and age of technology. And then, the other part that I wanted to mention is that we have a new strategic plan that we're working on. Matter of fact, I'll talk about it quickly and other business later, because we're going to be looking for one school committee or two members to actually participate in a full-day training on June 15th, if I remember the date correctly. And again, so this takes us through the next presentation, one of the next presentations which you're going to have from Jim, which talks about the new MCAS, which is great. But what is the MCAS score actually given us? Right? It's given us, right now, we're not even sure where we are with MCAS as this was system, not only us but everyone. Number one. Number two, what did it give us prior to that? It told us that X number of students were proficient or advanced. Did that actually improve and grow the number of students in Norton that go on to a four-year college, or did I get a great drop placement and go into the military? I can't say that it did. I can't see any data that helps me to make that conclusion, if you will. But I will tell you this, 94 percent of our students apply to four-year colleges. 88 percent of our kids continue their education, but only 70 percent of them to 72 percent are actually going to the four-year college. So, if you're going from 94, apply to a four-year college and get in, and get in, and you're getting 72 percent or 70 percent that actually go, you've got this pocket of students that have decided to go to a community college instead of a four-year college. That's fine. There's nothing wrong with that. My question is, why are we applying to a four-year school? And then, turning away from it. Is it money? Is it leaving home? Is it the major? Is it the mentoring? Is our guidance program not doing more of what it should be doing? Those are the issues that we really want to look at. And I think this data and information gives us more of that than one MCAS score, although important to the accountability of this. Thoughts?
So, these are, how do you always know I'm going to say something?
You just look at your body language and you figure it out.
It's usually a given.
I know, right? So, these are, I'll call them data points, I guess, are not, this is a standard, standard set of data points that have been developed. I'm curious why, and I guess you could potentially see this in some of the later data points you pointed out, but I'm curious why there's no, no like critical thinking type of thing.
Well, I think that's embedded in things like taking AP and IB courses, where you see more critical thinking, more critical writing.
I worry, though, in those classes, there's still just some rote members, and less true critical thinking. To me, I agree with you on the MCAS, or I think I agree with you, I think they're kind of wasting our time. But, sorry, Jen.
That's fine. I'm going to take my 20 slides and go down.
But, you know, critical thinking is, it's a hallmark of who's.
Correct. So, to answer you directly, our profile of a graduate goes into the skill sets that we believe every student should have. So, these are your data points. How do we get to the data points? Our profile of a graduate is going to say communication, critical thinking, critical writing, problem-solving, ability to work collaboratively, whatever the five or six skills, 10 skills, I think that's too many, but I think we need to concentrate on those five or six skill sets that we think not only get students to fulfill life skills, career readiness in college, but those are the ones that we want to say are our courses doing that, especially at the secondary level, predominantly high school. So, profile of a graduate would be where the skill sets are clearly articulated. So, if we say that we want students to be civic action-minded like these two gentlemen, I'm going to pick on these two guys today because they fit perfectly into this conversation. How do we, you know, people will say, well, we have community service. Well, we kind of have forced community service. My question is, how many hours beyond community services those guys decide to do because it's who they are? You know, you, me telling you, well, as a student in Norton High, you have to take 50 hours of community service. That's like, okay, you have to take English, you got to do it. But people like, some of these students, I know these two, are way above the 50 hours. So, they've clocked the 50 hours probably their freshman year, and now they've been doing 50, 100 hours or more after that, not even clocking it. Those are the type of skill sets that we want to say to develop in students. Grit is one of the biggest, most significant ones. I mean, you all know, I have a daughter who's 11, she's fantastic, she's great, I love her to death. But I see too many kids in our schools, and even with my own kid, who just quits on a problem right away. And, you know, we've had this discussion all the time, there's a math problem in front of them before they finish the sentence, they're already asking for help. There is the sense of grit. And where do we get that? Well, helicopter parents haven't helped, that's a fact. Lack of parenting hasn't helped. So, now we've got the two extremes, and most of our kids are stuck in the middle somewhere trying to figure out where they belong and don't belong, and how do they ask a question? And then, on top of that, the curveballs that most of us have seen, myself included, is trying to teach your kid math at home, first response is, what? I learned it that way. You're telling me something I don't know. You're supposed to carry it and put it over here on the top right-hand of the, I used to just put it above the number. I got to put it on a tree somewhere or some key language that they're using. So, you know, to me, that's, we did a real injustice in education, in my opinion, and this is just being the kind of ideological perspective thing. We instituted all these things by telling people they were great, but we never taught them why they were great, specifically our parents. You know, standards-based report card, I'm a big supporter of it, I think it works, but it means countless hours of training of parents on, because when they get up here, they go off that report into a number grade, and our school brains is constantly being looked upon by parents, because now they know what an 87 is, they know what a 72 is. We also see spikes in students who all of a sudden need to be tested special education services, because a child, you know, was a ex-student in elementary grade that's defined by a phrase, and here, they're a 75. Oh, my kid isn't a 75. They were progressing. 75 isn't progressing. 75 is your average. 75 is probably that as a good score. But that's when we have a lot of parents that question, you know, my child struggles in this course or that type of course. Did anybody here, well, maybe you didn't, I still didn't struggle in a course in school. But the fact of the matter is, I know I did. Just a bonus.
How do you guys feel?
But I think it's really important as parents that we really understand what that practice report, what that report card, what that standards base actually means. Some of the report cards sometimes is NA, not applicable, right? Because the kids haven't gotten to it yet. Well, what happens if they miss three MCAS questions on the test? And you're an analytical guy, and you're going through that test's answer key, and you now look at the report card from the other Friday, and you say, oh, there were three questions on standard six. Standard six in math? My God, they didn't even do it in school. How could my kid have gotten it right if they didn't even do it in school? Because it says NA on the standard six in the third term or trimester. So, I don't think, I don't, and I don't, I'm not knocking Norton Public Schools when I say that, because it's my fault. I'm not blaming anyone else before me or after me. I'm just simply saying, the transition to that, in my opinion, hasn't been right, done correctly in most school systems in the mouth. Any other questions, thoughts?
Anything else?
Okay. I will say, I think it's a better way to look at it. It's a much better way.
Well, I think it's great to say, how do I put this? I think it's awesome to say, you know, 95 percent of our students in the 10th grade got a proficient or better on their test. No one else is requesting that score. They might get a nice letter from the state that says you're in the top 25 percent, and oh, by the way, here's your $1,500, because everything else is in tuition. I don't think that that should make us feel good about where our kids, what their places they want to attend, or what careers they want to look into, or both. Because the skill sets of college and career readiness is not college and career, it's the same thing. I don't know, when I used to work at a Vokes school, I used to argue all the time, anybody in here want to hire a plumber who can't add or can't cut or can't solder? No, they need that skill set, right? But the most important skill set in order for them to get the job is probably an estimate of the job that they're going to give to you in writing professionally done that makes sense. Because in today's world, if it doesn't, you're probably not going to hire that plumber. In the old days, you probably would have. Today, the requirements for the two groups are the same. You want people who can critically think and write in their field of expertise. So, it's a combination of college and career and life readiness. It's not just go to college, because some kids don't make it in college, right? That happens too, and they become college dropouts, and they have as much of a difficult time, if not worse time, finding a job than a student who just left high school. This is where the vocational schools have always done really well. They go into the trade that they love. And at the secondary level, for us, we have to do more of that placement type of stuff than we currently do at Norton High School or, to be quite honest, any of the surrounding schools. Especially since we have, you know, Bristol Aggie spending $100 million on a new building in the next two years. So, competition's going to go. We all know the truth. When you build something new, we did it, iron enrollment increased at Norton High School. You know, it was declining before that.
Okay. Any other questions? All right, moving on to the next agenda item is a recognition. Dr. Better.
Thank you. Shelby, how are you?
Good.
Sit up right up here. Come on, yeah, right there. Bring all your friends with you.
Oh, my friends come on.
Bring everybody, bring up everybody with you.
Just all in two seats?
Yeah.
Well, welcome. I wanted to present to the school committee this young lady who, name is Shelby Pickham of our Champions Program, who's been with us for six years, I believe, as the director over at the JCS. And she was awarded the, and I'll read it from the packet, the Quality Achievement Award for the entire northeast region of Champions. In a nutshell, what this means is that she's the site director, and she was literally ranked number one, the best of the best in the area. And I was supposed to join Shelby out in Vegas until my mother-in-law had a tentative heart attack, literally, I don't know if you've heard the story, literally as I'm waiting to get on the plane, five minutes before I was leaving to join you for the conference, which I asked to speak at. And that's why I wasn't there, I don't know if anyone ever told you that. By the way, my mother-in-law's fine. It wasn't even a heart attack, but that's a discussion for another day. And one of the things that we wanted you to come out and just tell us a little bit about yourself and what you do, but really, I wanted the school committee to recognize how prestigious of an honor it was for you, but really for us, to have someone from Champions. We've had over a 20-year relationship with you folks, and to have one of our own who works for us for six years, which is another reason why Champion does so well for us, is because we have a continuity of staff. And so, congratulations. Thank you for representing us as well. I know you work for Champions, but I know that you do great things for us here in Norton. So, congratulations.
Thank you. So, you guys want me to tell you by myself?
Yes, yes.
Okay. I'm Shelby. I've been working for Champions for six years. I was inspired to work here by my mom right here. I actually started with her part-time six years ago, and I think maybe shortly, a year and a half later, I got promoted, and I started working in Norton, where I just love this school and I love all the staff. Megan is the director at LGN, which is one of my best friends now.
Well, she does a great job, by the way.
I've just had a really great team to learn from and take a lot of things from everybody and put my own twist on it. I think what we do is really, really, really special. We spend early hours in the morning with the kids and after-school hours, just really getting to know them and helping them develop as young people and be a big part of their lives. And this experience has been life-changing. I've gotten to meet so many special people that I've just learned even more from, that I get to take back to my team, and hopefully, we'll have some more winners in the future from our team. This is great. I really appreciate you guys celebrating my award.
Kate, any words?
I just need to, first, I want to say that I have to bring up that Debbie was also an award winner two years ago. So, yeah, so she's actually gone through this whole process twice, been an award winner twice for Champions, obviously passed it down. You know, we have an incredible staff. It's been three years running that this market of Champions has had a representative or a quality award winner go to our amazing Champion celebration, and then also the National After-School Association celebration, which is an amazing group of individuals all get together to just talk about what we do and why it is so important. I'm incredibly proud of Shelby. Watching her grow and develop has been unequivocally the proudest part of my career. So, very proud of her.
Awesome. I'll tell you, I, you know, didn't have a lot of experience with after-school programs. In my last district, we had our own for quite a while, then we had a third party that came in. But one of the things I didn't really know was about all this national association connection. So, not only you, but your competitors, all are involved in this national broad, huge association that collects data and information.
And I was looking at all the national data that is around how many students in Massachusetts, for example, take after-school care or before-school care. Not only from Champions, of course, there are other organizations, but there's also the opposite. And that is a lack of availability for a lot of school systems and for families to be able to provide a place that's safe. Our presentation next week is really about a common goal we have, which is we want academics, but we want it to be fun. Because these kids have been in school all day, right? JCS day for a kid is before school, potentially all day, and then after school. That's a long day. We have some students that arrive as early as...
7:00 AM.
And get picked up at...
6:00 PM.
Right? So think about the length of that day for a student, a young student, you know, at the JCS. That's a long day, and that's because families are working and, in some cases, out of town. I know some of the families. So we're pretty lucky to be able to even have that as availability for our parents and then for the kids, and then the kids having fun. And the most important part, which actually became part of the discussion as we continued our relationship, is the issue of continuity of staff, right? It's not a new director every other year. It's not a new employee every other year. It's not another Kate every other year, or Jimmy and so on. It's a really core group of people. So it makes it easy for these guys to pick up the phone and say, there's an issue that needs to be resolved. Or, hey, nice job on this. How can we do this again? So kudos to you folks for the job that you do. We love it.
Thank you for your continued partnership. I can't believe it's been over 20 years. It's just been amazing, amazing partnership all along. We really appreciate all of you.
Pleasure. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you. You're welcome, Shelby.
Thank you.
Thank you. So, real quick, I'm going to embarrass Shelby a little bit. No, I'm really not. I did enough. So as Dr. Bada said, the Champions Program is great for working families. And with three kids in the district ranging from 4th grade to 11th grade, all three of my kids have attended Champions. This is probably the first year you don't have one of my children. And to take your children and bring them to a stranger who is as remarkable as Shelby is, you couldn't ask for anything better. Megan, as well? I know you have my little spitfire in the morning. I hope she didn't hear me say that. The work these ladies do is incredible work. And I used to give Shelby a hard time just about every day, because I could just see like she was having one of those days, and I would crack a joke, or... But she always had a smile when she answered the door and usually gave me a hard time right back. But as she always said, there's only a few parents she could do that with, and I was one of them. And even in my position here, she didn't care. She still gave me a hard time. But the work you do is incredible. I don't know that you hear that enough, but it was important that, you know, we put you on the schedule, so thank you.
Thank you so much.
Anything else? All right, moving on to Mrs. O'Neill with DC Accountability.
Hi, everybody. Thank you so much for having me tonight. I'm going to give you a bird's eye view of a very detailed topic. Last week, I had the opportunity to go to a DECE event on the new accountability system. And everything that we presented was so well done and so detailed, I kind of pick and chose what I wanted to share with you tonight, just because I think it's important for the committee and for the community as a whole to have an understanding of how we're being judged at the state level in terms of our student reports. But some of the information is just so detailed, so I'm trying to give you the, you know...
Click notes.
So Massachusetts Department of Elementary Education had to readjust our accountability system with the new ESSA. ESSA is the reauthorization of the 1965 school law that was passed. And what they strove, what they were trying to do was to create a new system that gives schools and districts more information about how students are performing over and above just that one achievement score on the test system. So what the new system does is it talks, gives you more information in regards to school performance, looking at student attendance, looking at enriching course opportunities. It also takes a look at not only comparing our schools across the state with other schools that are similar to ours, but also how our students are performing year after year. So I want to just kind of go through quickly. So the new requirements require the Department to take a look at annual assessments for ELA, math, and science. We also have to look at student growth. We have to look at graduation rates for high schools. And this is a new one, monitoring the progress of our English language learners. That is something that our cross-nation has become a serious issue for our students that are learning English as a second language. And typically, those students are not achieving as, at a rate with their peers. So that's another area that we really need to focus on. And they also want to look at one measure of school quality other than just an assessment. So for our non-high schools, thinking about here in Norton, JCS, LGN, the Yale School, and the Middle School, are looking at four different areas. We're looking at achievement in math, science, and ELA. But we're also looking at student growth over time. So for example, how did a student perform on the 3rd grade test versus the 4th grade test? And so on and so forth. And then looking at our English language learners. For Norton, this is not a huge population of our students. There's about 35 students district-wide that speak over 18 different languages. So we have a small number of students, but a lot of different language groups out there. And then also looking at students that have chronic absenteeism. So missing 10% or more of their days when we're actually in attendance. At the high school level, they do all of those same things, achievements, student growth, chronic absenteeism. We also look at the graduation rate, the students who graduate within that four-year cohort, or students that graduate within five years. So often, sometimes we have a student who just needs to work through more credits and are able to earn it during summer school. They're considered part of that five-year cohort rate. Looking at our annual dropout rate. And then also looking at our students in 11th and 12th grade that are completing advanced coursework. So typically, when we think about MCAS data at the high school level, we're only thinking about our 10th graders who are taking ELA and math, and then our 9th and 10th graders who are taking a science test, whether it's physics or biology, which we talked about the last meeting. This kind of pushes the envelope a little bit to put some of our pressure on our juniors and seniors and to make sure that our juniors and seniors are still taking regular coursework. That becomes one of the other, the new components. So what the way they'll take all of this data is they'll do an average scale score. And they're also taking all of the information that we are giving to them within our student information system. So it's very, very important for us to make sure that the data that we're presenting to the state on our end is, number one, correct, and also uploaded in a timely manner, because those types of things will count against us if we don't send appropriately. So thank goodness we have Mrs. Kazadi, who does all of our district-wide data and does a fantastic job with them. So this is what the new ranking system will look like. Actually, because for the ELL students, you have to have 20 ELL students in a school for that component to count. And at this time, none of our schools have a total of 20 ESL students. So we're on that second column. 67% of our ranking will be based on achievement, 23% will be based on student growth, and 10% on that absenteeism. And that's for the non-high schools. When you take a look at the middle, so our high schools, and then across the state, there are some schools that are 7 to 12, or even we have an 8 to 12 school now, Holbrook. 48% will be achievement, 22 for student growth, 20% for high school participation. And then absenteeism in the advanced coursework are 10% down the bottom. So one of the pieces of feedbacks that I know both Super Tents Association and the MTA has given to the state is that chronic absenteeism actually counts more for our youngest students than it does for our high school students. And typically, our students in elementary schools that are chronic absenteeism at home. So that's kind of a tough one for me personally. I know that a lot of times, if the parents can't get them there, or there's something else that's going on at home, where typically, your high school students that are absent, then they're the ones that aren't coming to school. So that's something that the state is getting a little bit of pushback on. So they take all of that information, they put it into a percentile, 1 to 99, and it compares every single, like, school across the state. So for example, it will take all the four or five schools and compare them to the other. There's not a lot of them. There's only about 12, I think, statewide, take off middle schools, compare them to Norton Middle School. And it will use that information to identify the lowest performing schools in the state. Because of this new system, 2018 is the first year of this new accountability system, this new ranking, so they're only going to be looking at the data from 2018 in this first go-around. Typically, they have a four-year spread, where they take the data over four years. The year that's most closely connected is 40%. After that, year before that was 30%. We can't do that, because this is the only year we have data for. So you can't compare it to anything else, brand-new set of data. And I know we don't like to do that anyway, so... Another thing that we're doing is we're focusing on closing achievement gaps. So the state has always talked about the importance of closing achievement gaps, both across all of our students and then within our subgroups. So for example, our special education students, our Title I students, our ELL students. But they're also, they've started to figure out that you can close achievement gaps in two different ways. Your students that are performing on the lower end can get better, or your students that are performing on the higher end can get worse. So they've tried to change that dialogue and instead are asking every school to look at the lowest 25% of their students. So regardless if you're in an urban district or if you're in a very affluent community, every school has a bottom 25% and focusing on building up those students rather than closing those achievement gaps. And they'll do that in two different ways. Looking at a cohort of students, so every single student that was enrolled in the spring of 2018 in that school versus every student that was enrolled in 2019. And that's how they'll find the bottom 25%. So they'll identify those students who's in combination of their ELA and math average. So we're supposed to use that data for this administration, but they haven't given it to us yet. So next year, we'll have it, right? And then setting targets. So looking at the students who have improved over time, and really, actually, I think being able to identify the bottom 25% will actually be a really nice benefit for all of the schools, because we'll have that information, we'll also have our own local information. And it might be, it's going to be a really nice way to see if the data that we have on our students and how they're performing locally matches up with the way that they're performing in our state assessment. And those students that are consistently underperforming, how are we supporting them? What types of interventions are we providing our students? This is how they're going to give you points. So either you met your target, you get three points. You exceed the target, you get four points, and so on and so forth. And then you use one of these really fancy charts that we see every year, and it gets really overwhelming. So if you're taking a look, this is a high school, for example. You're going to be judged on all of your students, all 700 students that took the assessment. And then on the other side, just those lowest 25%. So your students that are in your lowest 25% are counted here as 50% of your ranking, and they're also counted here as 50% of your ranking.
Was that a Harvard-trained professor who came up with it?
I don't know who came up with it, but it seems like...
Didn't they have kids in their school system?
Twice, for your lowest-performing students.
So the fact is that you get rated on your bottom 25% counting for 50.
Yes.
And then the remaining 50%, they're counted again as part of the whole.
Yes.
Was there a reason why? Did they sort of share an explanation of why they're...
Well, that was the, so when the entire room realized that, they said, I know we've been getting a lot of feedback on that. Of course you are. Because you're counting this, you're kind of almost double jeopardy in one way, is that you're, you're those students that are chronically underperforming. But they're putting, the state's putting the pressure to take those students that are underperforming, that's the bottom 25%, and move, trying to move the dial. So it'll be interesting to see, you know, when you're taking a look at the ELA achievement, the achievement scores, the growth scores, the cohort rate, how it actually plays out in the end. But they really don't have the answer in another, in, yes, Jen.
Jen, can you define how, has the state decided to define chronic absenteeism? For example, I've got two cases in the district right now where I can't get those kids to school.
So students that are homebound for, you know, school phobia or medical issues, if they're hospitalized, those students will not count against that.
So they'll be medically excused?
Yes. But that's another reason that why districts need to be so careful about their student data and the way that they're reporting students as absent. So if a student is absent more than 10% of the days that they're enrolled. So a student that's enrolled 180 days, 18 absences. But for those students that are medically excused...
So at the school, at the school level, we've got to, we've got to make sure that folks are really checking to see what the potential, okay?
So the way that it works right now, schools are placed in levels of 1 through 5. Level 1 is being the highest level, a very high-performing school. Level 5, there are a few level 5 schools that are in flat level 5 districts that are under state receivership. The way that it works moving forward, the majority of the schools across the state will be placed into these categories here. They're meeting their target. Those are schools that fall in that 75 to 100 percentile. They are partially meeting their target, 50 to 74, or they're not meeting their target, 0 to 49. There will also be a section of schools that are requiring assistance or intervention, and that'll be schools that have very low percentiles, 1 to 10, schools with low graduation rates, schools with low subgroup data, or schools that have low participation. A few years ago, we were hearing a lot of pushback from families about taking part in MCAS. And it does count against schools in the districts where they have really low participation, which is challenging. The way that the districts have typically worked, so for, this is important for us too, schools ending in grade 3, so this is JCS and LGN, will only be referenced, will only be classified based on the criteria, so how that bottom 25% of our students are doing, comparing against ourselves. They can't rank us against the other schools across the state, because we have no student growth data. It's the first year of assessment for students. And then we don't have any schools pre-kitted to in our district, so those schools are extinguished. The way that it currently works is that the ranking of a district is only, they have felt that a district is only as good as their lowest-performing school. So if our lowest-performing school was a level 2, then we as a district were a level 2. They're no longer doing that. Basically, what they're going to be doing is combining all of our data together and running that crazy track that we saw and establishing our ranking as a district from that. So again, very similar to what we saw before, the district will be ranked as meeting targets, partially meeting targets, or not meeting targets, or that, when that means...
What's their end game with all of this? What are they hoping to gain, or what are their insights hope to be, or where are they going with this?
So I think testing in regards to math and ELA and science is a federal mandate for students in certain grade levels. I believe technically it's 35 and 8. So the state has some federal requirement that they have to be meeting. As a state, Massachusetts is very proud of the education system that we have, and, you know, we pay money every year to be ranked as our own country and we take the paid exam, because we believe that we're that much better than the rest of the country. So I think what they were hearing from MASs and from the teachers and from MASc was that we wanted to be ranking our students on more than just our, their achievement scores. So this was their attempt at integrating some new data points into the system, looking at coursework for our 11th and 12th graders and not, and keeping them as part of the pie, instead of forgetting 12th and 13th grade. Looking at students who are chronically absent, looking at really improving that bottom 25% of our students. And actually, for me, that, I think that's the biggest benefit of the change, is the way that they're looking at that. How we're being scored on those bottom 25% is not the benefit, but I think having the ability to really focus on those students, I think, will be really beneficial. I think at the end of the day, the Board of Education is trying to figure out how to give a little bit, but at the same time, holding onto that achievement and growth that they really, really feel strongly about.
So Jen, I do have a question.
Sure.
Are you done here? So if they really want school districts to look at the sort of lower-performing 25%, what kind of financial support are they going to give to the schools?
Unfunded, yep.
I don't believe that there's going to be any additional funding as a result of these changes.
So basically, do...
Similar to the way we always do things.
More of a class. So if we take this 25... So if we take this twenty-five percent model, and I'm asking a question that I know you can answer in terms of what you're listening to, because it's the same thing at my meetings. We can probably predict that twenty-five percent right now. And in Norton, I can tell you that a good percentage of that will be students on an IEP.
Yeah.
I don't, I don't need to put my students through a test to be able to do that, but we will do that because we have to, right? That's part of the process that we go through. My question goes to Carol, your, your question, which is that if we know this now, we're doing something about it, we're gonna take another test. We know that it's longer school day, longer school year, and more attention to literacy time, while we're not pulling students out of class for OTPT speech and everything else that they get pulled out of class. So you can't continue this model for populations of students. There's a study out of Washington State that I constantly tell my team about, about literacy. You want to improve kids who struggle with reading. They need more time on task from a high-qualified instructor. That's what they need, smaller class size, more attention to detail, and not necessarily tests. So my concern about the twenty-five is, and I'll give you my perfect example. Our average of students on an IEP is on average three to four percent higher than the state average. So if you do some math, we could find ourselves with some, with some holes just because we have a four percent higher population of students. In other words, we might see less students who don't test well and just more students who are on an IEP or five oh four even. So that concerns me in, in terms of the equity of this. But we'll have to see, you know, how this balances out over time, I guess. But that, that would be my prediction today.
Well, and the way that they look at student data now is we look at subgroup data. So we look at our special education subgroup. We looked at our Title I subgroup. We looked at our high needs subgroup. So those high needs are students that are maybe on free reduced lunch. They may be on an IEP, they may be on, have to receive Title I services. They may be a student that moves a lot from one district to another. Those are all students that are classified as high needs. I think that, as Joe says, those are the same students that we're going to see in that bottom twenty-five percent. And if we're talking about moving the needle with students that are struggling, it's about more time on task, more time on learning, and it's about more personalized learning for students, which is very challenging to do when you have high classes.
Any other questions? Thanks, Jen. Thank you, Jen. All right, moving on to the next item agenda. Vote to RFP, the food services, Mr. Munch.
Yeah, so one of the options I was presented to you in the finance committee a couple of weeks ago was to look at privatizing food services. In your packet, there is a timeline that I put together. So I'm basically looking for a vote tonight to approve me posting an RFP on Thursday of this week. The law says you have to post for at least two weeks before it's due. So I'm giving, I believe, about three weeks. So I'll post Thursday, and we'll have a tour of the facilities the following Thursday. There's a deadline for any questions from any vendors on the twenty-sixth. And then all proposals and the opening of proposals, which is a public opening, will happen May fourth at ten AM at the superintendent's office. So basically, this will be looking at a couple of different options for our food service department. It's a full-blown privatizing where management and staff are all under the umbrella of a vendor. There's another option of management being under the vendor, and then our staff remains Norton Public School staff. Or the third one is management under the vendor. Staff stays with Norton Public Schools, but as our staff retire or leave, the replacement staff coming in will be under the vendor. So it's almost, it's a blended situation until they're all finally under the umbrella of a vendor. So I just need a vote.
Now, if, if we go through this process and don't like what we see, we're not bound to it. This is just, this is just show us what you can do, not, you can't set in stone.
Right, you cannot fact find by just visiting somebody. You have to fact find by actually going through our, our process. And then the process dictates the fourth option, which is not to change anything, which is to stay with what we have. I just want to recognize there are folks from the food services department here tonight that I know some of you know. Couple of different things that I think are important before you take your vote. And that is, there's a $2.1 million shortfall. And as you know, because there's a realization that there's not going to be layoffs this year. So all of my pro people this and anti people that are about to live it, right? Because we are going to lay off staff. That's happening, guaranteed, happening. So maybe some, we can get some other folks involved in this process. We're getting $750,000 out of a $1.4 million request just to keep what we have. So that means we're short fifty percent. That doesn't include materials and supplies. That doesn't include $500,000 in special education between tuition and positions that we have to get, right? And that doesn't include transportation and utilities, which is another $75,000. So just think about that for a second, what the number is. And we'll get it down because we'll eliminate this, eliminate that, and eliminate this, and eliminate that. And then we're going to have people, the very people in front of children this year will not be in front of children next year in this district. That will happen for September. So all the minutia, all of the, you know, inflating this and inflating that and all the stuff I'm going to hear between now and the day that I unfortunately have to provide pink slips to people will happen. Promise, guaranteed, unless somebody comes up with that, that, that funds. And that, that projected cut will include that the school committee has to vote to utilize its school choice, school choice funds, which you all know, I believe, is a game that's being played right now. Our budget number has not moved since the first day it came forward. That's the first time in the five years I've been here because of the pass-through of the $500,000. So we all know we're being forced to use that $500,000 to keep staff. Or you're looking at doubling the amount of people that have to be laid off. Path professionals, food services, custodial, internal staffing in terms of transportation, teachers, administrators, all gonna happen. Every category is going to be hit, every single one. And I'm gonna tell you something, twenty-six years in this business, nine years as a superintendent, I've never had anybody call my bluff and not come out on the winning side one hundred percent of the time. We will have layoffs this year. So we have to keep all of our options open. Our options in three categories, food services, internal transportation, and custodial, is to potentially look at what those options are. That's all we're asking you to do tonight as a vote, is to allow for us to look at what the options are. And there are general numbers in terms of what this means. We are currently running a $60,000 food services negative. So that's a negative that five years ago was $80,000, it's down somewhat. It's $15,000, $16,000 right now on actual funds coming in for food and so on and so forth versus also paying for a food services manager on top of that. So that's the reason why you have all of these options. Most school systems do not go out for all of these options. They make a determination ahead of time. I want to do it the opposite way. I want to come back to you folks with as many different options that we can look and say, well, if we're gonna save $10,000, this is a waste. If we're gonna save $30,000, probably still a waste. But if we're gonna be saving six figures or potentially offsetting that, then we have to look at it.
So what are we, what are we hoping to accomplish with this? I guess what I'm, what I'm asking is, so right now, we're running a $60,000 deficit. If we fully privatize it, we're essentially handing it over to somebody else who's going to run it? Or
Yes.
Or they're going to pay us to take it over?
Combination of both could come through the RFP process. Where you save your money is on benefits on the town side.
So what do we, what do we? So they would, if we completely privatize it, they would still charge the students the same fees for
Yeah, the, the, the idea of charging the fees still belongs to the school committee. All of that still belongs to you folks on a regular basis like it does now.
I guess I'm, I'm having a hard time wrapping my head around why someone wants to bid on this.
Well, I can tell you, if you'd like to take a visit, I can give you plenty of places to go visit and see, both financially why and product-wise why. I've gone to them.
If I'm, if I'm company ABC and I come in and say, okay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna submit a proposal, where am I making my money? Where am I, where's my bread and butter on this?
If they completely privatize, different benefit package in terms of costs, hourly wage, they potentially are paying less than we pay, all of those types of benefits. There's no, on our side, there's no retirement system. On our side, there's no healthcare. On our side, there's literally a cost that we put to doing business. And then the goal is to grow that account, level fund it or grow that account. We have a nearby district we just visited that's, that's making $50,000 in its second year profit. That money is revitalized back into the kitchen. Right now, we have to pay for that separately. If you remember a couple of years ago, we went in for capital money. I think it was $38,000 if I remember correctly.
What's our, what's our total salaries paid for food services right now? All of it's staff and management.
This is, this is a line I've been in our budget rating.
Yeah.
It's a revolving account?
It's a revolving account that at the end of the year, money has to be taken from another account to make it zero.
Right.
Remember that.
Total salaries, $428,864. Okay, so right now
Not including benefits.
Right now, we're, we're laying off $428,000 in salaries. There are other costs, obviously, foods, et cetera. We're bringing in revenue that we're charging, and we, we end up on the negative side of $60,000. If we privatize it, we would take that $428,000 in salaries at least off of our, our book, right? My thing about that
Yeah, they're gonna have different benefit package that the town pays, that the private company pays for, that you're no longer paying for. But then you're talking about paid vacation, paid holidays that we currently pay for, they're no longer being paid for by us.
What I'm saying is, what I'm saying is, right now, right now in our budget, there is $428,000 in salaries that we're paying. If we privatize it, that disappears. That private companies can be paying those salaries. So that frees up $428,000 in.
Well, there's gonna be a cost to us from the private company as well, from not only material supplies, but in terms of the profit margin that's made.
What do you mean it's gonna be a cost to us?
Well, there's a, any company that you bring in has a cost to them. They're not coming in for free. You're, you're paying a third-party vendor.
That was my question.
You're paying a third-party vendor.
My original question was, why am I, as a company, why am I bidding to this? And that's the answer, so we're gonna pay them.
Yes, yes. They have urgency power that we could never even try to get.
All right.
That's one, right off the bat. Two, they pay less in hourly salaries, so there's a cost benefit. Their vacation packages and all of the benefits packages that we pay for, that is part of that money he just said, versus what the town pays for, which is healthcare, which is on top of that, which I believe is a hundred and
Twenty-three.
So it's another $123,000 added to that number on the town side for health benefits.
I feel like we're not gonna see that $123,000 right now.
Yeah, but, yeah. Do you think the town's gonna give us?
Well, it depends on how you want to fight for it. I mean, that's, that's, that's the
Place is getting old.
So circling, I guess circling back to my, my very first question. So what are we hoping to get out? It's like, what, are, are we thinking we're gonna see $100,000 or are we
Have no idea till you see a bit. Have no idea till you see a bit. You could have a company that comes in from North Carolina that's already working in Easton. You could have a company that's already working in Brockton, Easton, Stoughton, and Canton, and they want to pick this up and they decide to bid on it. Same thing as Champions does. We had four bidders with Champions, and that bid came within pennies.
Yeah.
Pennies, you were in those. So we don't know. We have no idea what, there's been no discussion with anyone about what that money dollar means. What this does is it allows for us to see that projected money between operational, our revolving account, negative operational, healthcare, and total costs. And you can actually make a comparison of apples to apples.
So this vote is just for information gathering?
We're not closing down anything.
Right.
We're gathering, and we're trying to do it as quickly as we can. So if we have employee issues, we can either make them very happy by saying nothing's changing, or we can make it very sad in saying something is changing. And that change is also done different ways. Again, there is the management side and employees stay, and as employees retire and or leave, the new employees only belong to the private company. There's full privatization, everybody. There's just management privatization. Those are really your three golden nuggets to look at.
Are there other districts that are relatively similar to ours that are
Yeah, we visited two, yeah. Easton, public school, slightly bigger. They privatized a number of years ago. They're actually using, because it's a bid process every three years. And Somerset Berkeley, which also is on their second contract with another company.
Need one of them would share with you how the finances work.
They were in the same position as us, fifty to a hundred thousand in the red. And in two, I think Easton was two years, they made a total switch to six figures in the black.
Somerset Berkeley, it's got one building that was, now, remember, this is money reinvested back into the kitchens because you're not going for other monies for that. But it's not money that belongs to the third-party company. They have their pie, and then you have the difference. Meal counts go up.
Are we asking to see both the complete privatization?
Yes.
And the measure from
Yeah, we're seeing all three. All three options would be looked at.
The third, the third, I think, is less relevant to us.
Still put it out.
We have a $2.1 million hold now, not two or three years from now.
Right.
I don't know that that's, to me, that's not a really enticing option.
Well, if, if, if there's no concern of the school committee on what it means to healthcare benefits, money not being available to the school department, then clearly, that option is not an option to even look at.
Yeah, I just don't, I just don't think that one is coming back this way.
Yeah, I think it's a concern. I just don't think that, I think that we mention it in every year and it's, we see nothing. I, I don't, I don't know how many more different ways we can say things.
So we cut, we continue to just absorb a $60,000 cut and not collect the information?
No, we're not saying that.
Yeah, no.
We're not saying that, we're talking about the health here.
Well, I think you have to, you know, again, it, it, is everybody gonna eat the cake here? I mean, is that what we're doing? I mean, at some point, there needs to be some pressure on understanding that if we, if we're letting go, let's just say for the sake of argument, five people are being laid off tomorrow. That's five people who are, if they're all on a family health plan, is saving $17,000 on that side of town. So my argument might be, well, why don't you give us that, one of the 45,000 of that, so I don't have to lay them all off?
That's, that's our point, is we don't think you're gonna.
Well, we, we might not gonna, but that doesn't mean that we shouldn't try for it.
Oh, I disagree.
So where does that, so I guess my question then is, where does that money go? I mean, if, if, if we're gonna be just laying off people, if we're gonna be laying off people or cutting these people's jobs so that the town can just do whatever it wants, it's just gonna, our goal is just to say, hey, we just saved you $200,000. Way to go. We're not gonna make an argument that the 70/30 split that supposedly happens around
Well, it should be a hundred percent, right? It should be 70/30. But the problem is, it's not. And what happens, I'll answer your question, in the fall, there'll be a bunch of requests from a bunch of people for money. There will be, and that'll be that.
Right, and we're looking at $2.1 million in cuts for this year. What's the town looking at? Nothing. Town said nothing.
Because it's a very strong, the bluff has been called. I, I said it a couple of minutes ago.
I can tell you right now, by the way, on that school choice, you're starting at four to one. And your vote starts at four to one, I can tell you right now. Because that is a fool's paradise, so.
Understood.
As, as town lives off of that free cash, is, they're trying to make up There's a disaster waiting to happen.
All right, so entertaining motion to approve as presented, the bid process.
So can I just, before we do that, so one thing I would say that, is I look at the, is look at our timeline. To get our proposals by the fourth and then award it on the seventh, I feel like that's kind of a compressed timeline right there. Like, I, I think we, we want to know what the money was and maybe have a little bit of time to kind of mull it over.
See, the problem is, if, in fact See, the problem is, if in fact we do move forward with a contract with a vendor, the Department of Ed needs to review it and approve it before June 30.
So the 4th is a Friday?
Uh, yes. And then the 7th, we have a meeting.
I'm assuming the packets will be gone on Thursday? So we won't even receive information other than maybe if you want to shoot an email?
No, we would get the information to you.
So I'd like a little bit of time to mull that over.
You can, you can, you can, we can have a special town, we can have a, a meeting on the 14th of May, which is a week later, which is the day of town meeting anyways.
You know what? Why don't we, my preference would be to wait 10.
May 14?
Yeah, to give us a little more time to think about.
We could even just have a meeting with just this on though.
Yeah, because we're, we're having a meeting anyways. We always have a meeting anyways that day, so.
It's a regular scheduled meeting for us, I think. No, is it? No, it's not. So you're, you're already having an action item.
Yeah, so bump that, we'll call a meeting to order for the 14th.
Yeah, sorry.
I think if we could just make it public that had we perhaps voted in an override last year, we wouldn't be having these conversations.
That train, plane, boat, everything else is already left.
We would not be having these conversations.
Okay. Remember that for the next, we have to talk about.
Called the bluff. Called the bluff.
All right, so entertain a motion to approve process with the one date changed to May 14th for the final review.
So...
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. All right, the next agenda item is the bus transportation process, Mr. Lunch.
Yeah, so it's similar to last year. $350 per rider, no cap. It's, the registration's starting about a month earlier than last year, which means the deadline is a month earlier than last year. They will be online registration only. So last year, we did online and paper and it was an absolute nightmare to keep track of everyone because some people would register online, four times, because they didn't think it went through, and then they would send in paper. And it was just, it was a mess for us. So we created our own email address for transportation. All these online forums are just going to that, so we can keep it in one place. A couple of things that came up last year, the two-mile calculation. I'm putting it in as Google Maps is the only map you can use. No MapQuest, no Yahoo Maps.
What year? Is there a year that we can put on that? Like, is it Google Maps 2018?
Current.
Today.
Okay. I'm just saying. I'll put a link on the transportation website that actually links you right to Google for each school. So there's no confusion. I'll be sending an email out Friday, I believe it's the 13th.
Friday 13th.
Friday 13th. It will go out to all parents. That will include links to the transportation website, which has everything on it. The, and it will open on the 16th, so it will open Monday. It will, all registrations and payments are due by June 29th, which I believe is a Friday.
So on that, June 29th?
Yep.
Payments due. When are we discussing the busing and whether we're going to cut 7 through 12?
That'll be as we get closer to the, to town meeting and final numbers actually provided to us and all that stuff.
Okay, so...
We'll look at 7 to 12 cuts and we'll look at tier, changing the tiered system of busing that came up at the end column the other day.
Okay. Yeah, so if that happens...
Are we looking at advertisements on the buses?
We're looking at advertisers on the buses.
We're naming a school to a business.
Where?
Where are you to get all?
So we've heard that Wareham does that.
Advertising their buses.
I'm working into it now.
I guarantee you no other, no other departments getting those questions.
No other. And we don't own the buses anyway, so it doesn't matter. I don't think Bloom would like that at all.
They're not asking the transporters to have advertisements on the buses.
No other, I guarantee you.
Yeah.
So we'll have, we'll have ample time though to, so I don't want people to send in payments if we turn on sale, by the way, we're not actually giving you bus service.
So that's going to happen. I mean, grade seven to 12, they're going to be paying their bus fee. And then if we decide, you know, after next Monday, which we will, we'll just refund it back.
Yeah.
It'll be a part of the net process, but...
Will it be somewhere noted on the website that there is a possibility?
Yeah, I'll put it on there.
That's a good idea.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Due to budget cuts?
Yep, right.
And then you'll just probably get a lot of phone calls and emails.
Oh, yeah.
It's okay.
Other than that, there's really not much that's changed.
Except you're going to mail out the cards this year?
I'm mailing them out. I'm not, not going to parent night to pass them out. I'm not going to sit out in the front of the superintendent's office and passing them out. I'm mailing them all out. And the big thing last year is, if you are going to take the bus, no matter if you live two miles or 100 miles away, or if you're on an IEP or not, everyone registers for the bus, everybody, so we can keep track. I got that called about 100 times last summer. And like last year, there will be, so the routes will go out and then I'll have another online form if you want to request a bus change. A little bit more streamlined this year, so.
How much do we lose on busing?
A lot.
Oh, I like a lot of it.
What do you mean?
What's our, what's, what's our negative on busing? Between what we have to pay to Bloom or...
So we pay, I think it's 961,000 this year and...
Paid 961.
For the contract, right? And we take, we took in, I think, one, we're projected to take in 183 this year. So I think it pays 18% of the bus contract. The rest is in the operating budget.
All right.
So we pay $961,000 for the bus contract?
Yeah.
And we only collect $183,000?
Yes, so we're losing... Usually 18 to 20%.
Yeah, but don't forget you got mandated busing and then you have to provide transportation. So this goes back to that discussion. Do you go with mandated busing here and then you fill the buses and you only have available seats and not stock in buses? And unfortunately, this tiered system's always been about, let's provide as much as we can. Some of our nearby communities, what they do is they say, "I have to, I have to transport these 700 kids and I need X number of buses." So there's only 200 seats available and you only get another bus once you're able to actually fill that entire bus. And your, your routes may be longer and you have mixed grades in them.
The problem with that is though, even if we can fill the bus, we're not, we're not paying for it. We're still losing money.
At $60,000 a bus for the year, roughly.
You know, there's 40 seats and there's $350, we're not, we're not paying for it, so...
And we're saving money by having a tiered system, you know, by using the same bus three times, let's say.
Yeah, yeah.
So one of the questions is, can we save money by combining the middle school and high school? Which would also probably require start time at the high school to change a little bit, which is really not a bad idea.
Not in what, anyway, right?
Right. Or do we pick up the, when we pick up the LGN kids, do we also pick up the HAY kids at the same time? So therefore, cut, you're cutting a potential tiered...
So you've got kids, you've got kids for LGN, HAY on the bus at the same time?
K to 5, right.
K to 5.
Yeah. And then you do that same thing for the JCS. Do we have enough buses to do that for the JCS, K to 5, and move the start time of the JCS? Move it, and then they, and then move the high school's start time back further? I, I don't know. We haven't, we have to look at all the bodies.
Yeah, I mean, I, I looked at it a little bit, combining high school and middle school. And without talking to Bloom or anything, but it's in our contract, if we take it from a four-tier down to a three-tier or a three to a two, there's a certain cost savings to it. I think we could cut a bus or two if we did that.
What time do JCS start?
I should know, it's not keeping...
9:20.
They start coming in at 9:05.
9:05, they come in at 9:20.
And the LG?
7:50.
7:35.
7:35.
7:35.
And the Yell?
8:20.
8:20.
And nope?
8:35.
Someone authoritatively has given me time.
I think all the schools in and I work here.
And what's the high school?
7:30.
7:40.
7:40.
7:40.
They start coming at 7:15.
Yeah.
So what would make the most sense is to take the JCS, the LGN and the Yell and combine that, right?
See if it works, right? Because two of those routes are coming into one school and picking up for that at the same time.
Yeah, smooth those times out. So, I don't know, whatever, the Yell starts at...
Well, we have to look at shared staff and all that too.
8:30, 8:45.
So just keep that in mind.
I just think it's something that we need to really look at.
Yeah, we will.
Because $2.1 million is a tremendous amount of money to cut.
You'll save it, you'll, you'll have actual numbers on that after July 1st.
Sorry?
You want to project stuff out, you can, but your projections are going to be off. You're not going to be able to do it until you have actual routes done to know, how many actual buses do you need?
Right. We'll have to base it off of this year.
I was going to say, can't we base it off of this year?
Yeah, we can. That's kind of, that's what I did.
But you got a shift in population of kids too, don't forget that.
Yeah, but I mean, if you got to do something, you have ballparking somewhere. So I would look at that. I would look at smoothing the three schools into one and the two schools in one. And I would also look at cutting just the high school. That would be an option I'd want to look at as well.
You got to go 7 to 12.
Why do you have to go 7 to 12?
State law.
Oh, that's right. We had this conversation. We had this conversation. Because I asked you about that.
So the impact on that is a double whammy of you're a family with a sixth grader and an eighth grader, one can take the bus and one can't.
Why does the state require that you cut seventh and eighth as well? That makes no sense.
Yeah, because the way, the way the rule has been established has been a K to 6 and then 7 to 12. In the old days, elementary schools went until sixth grade. The law is still for men.
So do you have it broken down by grade, how many kids ride the bus? So can we get that information then?
Sure, sure. Yep.
I mean, I think that...
Don't forget that that K5 number is going to include a shift in who pays and who doesn't pay.
Yeah.
So just keep that in mind, that it may not necessarily mean more kids are paying. It could, I, I don't know, but you're, you're going to have a shift in population in other words.
Right, so why?
Because the third graders moved to the Yell.
Oh.
So what, their address is no longer at JCS or LGN.
They may be two miles, they may now be more than two miles.
Yeah, unless we go until next year, we can't do it perfectly. You just got to do your best efforts.
Yeah, I'm just saying that you're projecting, if you're trying to project how much of a savings you're going to have for, for May 14th and then July 1st, that's a hell of a gamble.
Yeah.
Conservative.
But we know it's going to be a savings. And we know it's going to be a six-figure savings, so...
I don't know if I feel as comfortable as you do about that statement, but we, we will do our best to give you the, the most conservative, best statement that we think would work.
I feel like we've been talking about the buses and the, the changing of the start times for the schools for a while. So maybe this is the time to really kind of look at that and make some decisions and maybe it will help, you know, financially. We've got to come up with something here.
Yeah, I think it's interesting that the discussion about changing school times has to do with buses, not the educational concept.
Yeah.
So my, I don't, I guess I don't need another committee for that, like every other district has done. That's the positive check. But it's the wrong reason, in my opinion, to change school times.
Right, but I think, yeah, but you were talking about it, but you were talking about it for a while anyway though, correct?
Yeah, we've talked about it internally when we did the EPP study.
Right.
And shifting the, the JCS. And we've also talked about shifting the high school as well.
Right. So I'm not thinking of this just because of the bus. It is, I'm thinking of it because it's something that's been mentioned for a while now. Maybe it's, I don't know, maybe it can go hand in hand and help the budget as well.
All right, moving on to the next agenda item. Review and vote on proposed school meeting dates 2018, 19...
Mr. Chairman, you have two proposals in front of you. One is the traditional calendar that you always see every year, which is the Monday meetings. There are 18 of them currently slated. That doesn't include a town meeting in May, a town meeting in October. You would have the first five meetings all happen at the schools like we normally do and there would be a Saturday in February workbook. So that's the first one, 18 meetings. The second one, same start time, is to move them to Thursdays. I haven't proposed this to you before. I did that more of in alignment with the Board of Selectmen and seeing if people wanted